Excuse me, first of all, we're gonna have our prayer. We're gonna ask Ms. Harris to come to pray for us.
Lord, we're coming for you this evening, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this evening, we give you honor, we give you praise, oh God. Bless the minds of your peoples in this council meeting, oh God. Lord, we thank you. Thank you for your love and your kindness and your mercy, oh God. Continue to bind us together with good understanding, oh God, with love, oh God. Lord, you hook us up like we need to be hooked up. Let your spirit dwell in us, oh God. Cover each and every one of us with your blood and wrap us in your love, oh God. As we make decisions for this city, oh God, you bless our mind, oh God. Word our mouth, oh God. Cover us, oh God. And we thank you right now, Lord. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Mr. Wayne Fuller, Lieutenant Colonel, retired United States Air Force, please come and do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the call to order. Roll call.
Mayor McClendon. City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Counselor Katz.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam. Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Willis.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum present. We can get started with our business for today.
I made a motion that Ray Mohammed chaired this meeting today.
Can I have a second? All in favor? Thank y'all so much. Now that we have all of that behind us, we are going to continue on with our agenda. We are going to ask if everyone has looked at the minutes, and if so, can I have a motion to correct, to approve if there are no corrections?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
All in favor? I think I missed something here. The bid openings is something that we need to do. I think we discussed in our pre-council meeting that we are going to table that until further notice. May I have a motion to table? Does it need a motion?
Motion to table indefinitely.
A motion to table indefinitely, second?
Second.
Now, we're talking about the demolition?
We're talking about the demolition, the bid opening, the community. Right, we talked to Mayor McClendon, and he's decided that we're gonna wait on these for just a little while longer because he's doing further research on programs that he's looking into where, while he's out at his meetings. So, we're gonna table this one indefinitely. So, we did have a motion to table it. We get a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Mr. Luca would like to speak on that for just a moment.
Would it be possible just to go two weeks with it? Instead of indefinitely?
I didn't know if the mayor, you know, he was doing a comprehensive plan. I know if he had it ready or not, we can always put it back on the agenda, but either way, it's fine.
Right, even if we do-
I think we'll be ready in two weeks, but whatever your wishes are.
We can just put it back on the agenda in two weeks, whether it's table indefinitely or whether we make a decision to do it. Either way, it can get back on here in two weeks. So, can we have a motion to either put it on the agenda in two weeks or table indefinitely? Council members, what's your-
Motion to table at the next council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, two weeks it'll reappear on the agenda. Now, we can get to the minutes. Has anyone, everybody looked at the minutes? And if so, are there any corrections that need to be made?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
The minutes are now approved. Our old business, we have a second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 806 Auburn Avenue permitting a greenhouse in R1 Family Residential District. Just, this is just the second reading. It'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for the third.
I'm gonna go ahead and read it for the second time.
You're gonna read it for the second time?
Yes, ma'am. This is the second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 806 Auburn Avenue permitting a greenhouse in an R1 single-family residential district.
All right, we've heard it read for that second time, and it'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for the third and the final reading. And at that time, we can have whatever discussions or whatever citizens would like to come forward to make their plea, their agreements, or whatever they may want to do. The next order of business is second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 1105 Balfour permitting a communication tower in R1 single-family residential. I think City Attorney, I think in pre-council, we decided to refer that back to the planning commission.
I think what we had discussed was tabling indefinitely.
Right, and referring it, and once we're tabling indefinitely, it's gonna go back to the planning commission. All right, may I have a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion, we table it indefinitely for a second.
All in favor? Passes.
All right, this is the, you may go with the next ordinance. Second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located on Bill's Grill Road permitting a communications tower in a C2 open display commercial district.
All right, and that's the second reading. It'll appear in two weeks on the agenda, in two weeks for the third and the final reading.
Mayor, if I may make a motion that we read R1 and O1 by title only, please.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Pulliam and his absence. I'm making most of you act as aldermen and Pulliam today.
All right, this is a resolution, a resolution approving matters pertaining to industrial development revenue bonds previously issued.
All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Philip Sorrell if he'll just come for a moment and explain what this is all about.
Yes, madam. This pertains to the Bosch Power Tool Facility, which is one of our top corporate citizens in this community. They have been at this location at North Airport Road since 2001 and employed 380 people. What they are asking in this resolution and the attached agreement that goes with the resolution is a 15-year extension of the pilot agreement. It's a supplemental agreement that will allow for this 15-year extension at an abated tax of 65%. Presently, the property under the Act 9 Industrial Revenue Bonds is on the books at no tax. And this will move it to 35% of what the taxes would ordinarily be as a payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's a compromise that's been worked out between the company and our office in consultation with the city attorney and meetings with them and subsequent follow-up. We feel like it's a fair agreement that has been rendered between the two parties to allow us to keep this very important corporate citizen in our community and to keep these 380 jobs located right here.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sorrell while he's on the floor? And we did discuss that a few weeks ago in a meeting that we had, and of course, I'm on board. But right now, we're going to get council members to vote on this particular resolution. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Ms. City Clerk, please give that resolution a number. Nobody objected. Yeah, somebody said, they did second it.
Myself and Wayne Crum.
That resolution number will be 2211.
All right, let's go to our next order of business, O1.
This is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs to flush truck for street department, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
All right, we've heard that read for the first half, and I think we want to read this out three times today. Could I have a motion to place it on the second reading?
Motion to spend the rules and place it on the second reading.
Second? All in favor?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs to flush truck for street department declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Make a motion to be further spending rules and place it on its third and final readings.
Second.
All in favor?
This is third reading. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs to flush truck for street department declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
All right, we've heard it read for the third and final time. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Now, we do have an emergency clause attached to that City Attorney.
An emergency clause, paragraph two.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? The emergency clause passes. Ms. City Clerk, please give that a number.
Ordinance, that will be ordinance number 2525.
All right, now we're down to our permission request. Permission to award the bid for Roberto Jackson's Neighborhood Center for flooring and asbestos. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Are there any discussions, first of all?
I'll second. So you have a discussion?
Second it? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, it's a project that definitely needs to-
I hate to seem like the mean guy, but we've been dealing with it a long time, I know. And if you guys wanna go ahead and do that, fine. But I'm against it. Because I feel like the other people should've had the same, all of them should've had the same information. All of them should've been bidding on the same thing, and they wasn't. And Paul and him came and told us that they didn't have all the information. We didn't go to deal. And if y'all still wanna give it to the southern bidder, go ahead. But I can't, I can't go along with that.
I think we may need to call the roll on this one. City Clerk, please call the roll. Are there any other discussions, first of all? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to add is, this is kind of a two-part project. I'd like to see the council go ahead and approve the asbestos removal. We need to get that done immediately. And then bring the flooring back up in two weeks and try to resolve these issues, so.
I go along with that.
How are you gonna split it up like that?
Now, I'm sorry, Tracy?
Yes.
You want to do-
Asbestos needs to be removed immediately.
Asbestos has to be removed.
Yes. Can't go and do any flooring work till that's done.
And then the other, wait two weeks.
Okay, to keep from being confused, how are we going to do this? Because we have one big bid on this. So how are we gonna split, what's the bid for the asbestos? Mr. Luca? Because we wanna make sure we have everything perfectly clear.
Actually, the asbestos is a specialized work, so it's a separate bid, and it's gonna be a 10-day notice before they can even start work. So, that wouldn't be a holdup if you, the asbestos needs to, needs to get going if we're gonna do the project.
You don't have any clue what it's gonna cost, though?
Yeah, we have the bid, yeah, you have it in your paperwork.
How much is that?
Twenty-two thousand.
Oh, I see it down here, twenty-two thousand five six seven, is that it?
Yeah, and that's probably at least three weeks before that would be completed if we told them tomorrow. That's best-case scenario.
So let's, any, anything else?
But Paul didn't, did the other contractors or the architect, did they not compensate for this, this era that was the square footage era?
They, they, he did his best to extrapolate it and did his best to try to, all the products were not exactly the same. There's a lot of different flooring products out there with different specs. And even, even, you know-
Right.
Our original contractor, he found another product that was, that he found, you know, that he thought was, would work better. So, the flooring was difficult, that's why we relied on the architect. He's the expert in this area, and he wrote you a letter with his, with his recommendation. There wasn't a lot of difference between the bids from the, from, you know, amongst the low bidders, there wasn't but a $2,000 or $3,000, I think, difference between any of them when you, when you got, really got to looking at it. But again-
But in your opinion, though, if you're the contractor and you're working on a project, would you want another contractor to come in?
No, sir, I wouldn't. And administering a construction project, a rehab project like this, the more contractors you have, the more cumbersome it is because they are working on top of each other. If you have something go wrong, they have the tendency to blame the other one for it. So, and that's just, that's just-
Well, I'm in, I'm in, I would like to go ahead and put this to bed. I mean, we have been dealing with this now for, since I've been on the city council. And I know Willis's objections to it, but I think the contractor that's in there will do you a good job. And I think we ought to go ahead and vote it in and get it done and put it behind us and start working on the part. And if we have any issue, we can go back to him. You got one guy. That's, that's one thing that gets it finished out. It's been all years since I've been here.
All right, ma'am.
This has been a project that's been long-running. It's been over two years that I know of, and I think I'm ready to take care of it.
So, let me get it perfectly clear what we are getting ready to do. Are we going to vote for Mr., for Quality Flooring? And that quote, the gentleman who's already there? Are we gonna go down to Abatement Company, S E G, and I don't know who that is, to do the asbestos? I need to know what we are voting on now, 'cause someone has said-
I think we're, are we not-
Voting on-
Going to vote on the quote for S E G or whoever to-
That's for this asbestos.
We're not gonna vote on anything, they're just gonna go ahead and let Quality Flooring have it. We're not gonna vote on nobody else, just let Quality Flooring have it.
Would this be a two-vote?
We don't have to vote on it. The reason I was having the roll call was because there was some confusion, and everybody did not want Quality Flooring to do the entire thing. But since we decided that Quality Flooring is not gonna do the entire thing, we're just gonna make a decision to let the asbestos man for the twenty-two thousand five-
Right, right now, the, what's on the agenda is the permission to award the bid for Roberto Jackson Neighborhood Center for flooring and asbestos. So, that's what we're talking- Well, that's what's on the floor right now. There's been no other, you talked about it, but there really wasn't a motion. So, that's what we have on the floor for discussion.
So what we need to do, I guess, is just get a motion?
Vote on that if you want to. But right now, you have discussion, and you haven't taken a vote on that particular permission request.
Mayor, if I may, I ask that we approve the asbestos removal. It will take three weeks before the floor contractor can ever get in and do any work. It'll give council plenty of time to get with planning and development, to make sure that they're comfortable with the bidding process. And then, if we can prove that in two weeks, there's still gonna be a week out before they can get started on the job.
So we're going to approve the asbestos?
That's what I'm asking, I don't have a second, but yes.
Okay, so the, the permission request says, oh, done. Permission to award the bid for Roberto Jackson Neighborhood Center for flooring and asbestos. We're not gonna deal with the flooring part right now. We're just gonna deal with the asbestos part.
'Cause it's gonna take three weeks.
All right, may I have a motion to that effect? That we not deal with the flooring, we're just gonna deal with the asbestos?
We will bring that back on, it'll be on the agenda for two weeks from now.
The flooring part, okay.
Mr. Martin.
I just, as we talked in pre-council, I suspect that the contractor's gonna say, pay me for what I did, and we'll just rebid it.
Contractor cannot step aside on the property until the asbestos is removed. So, my understanding is, they'll come in and do their job, and then the floor contractor will come in and complete their job. There's not two separate contractors, there's not two flooring contractors. There's asbestos removal and then a flooring contractor. Am I misunderstanding?
So you're proposing two contractors work on the building?
No, I'm proposing that we get asbestos out of the building, and then bring the flooring contractor back in.
Everybody isn't supposed to be in there dealing with asbestos.
I'm assuming the flooring contractor can't be in there while this asbestos is being removed.
The permission request-
I assume the way it would happen.
I guess the way you read the permission request, it does say that the-
It says flooring and asbestos.
Flooring and asbestos.
So we're gonna, what we're going to do is just amend it to just the asbestos, and we'll come back later in two weeks or however long to make a motion on the flooring.
And you very well, council approve whoever your low bidder is, and they'll follow in right behind them as soon as asbestos is cleared.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna have to have a motion to amend this permission request to read, permission to award the bid for the Roberto Jackson Neighborhood Center for asbestos. That's how we're gonna have to read it now. So may I have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Did we do that right? All right, so that, that's gonna be for the twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to S E G Incorporated at 3205 Kirby Witten Row Suite 103A in Bartlett, Tennessee.
Well, she's just clarifying her statement.
Right, right, we just, right, we weren't gonna do that anymore. We just amended that.
She amended.
Mm-hmm. We weren't gonna, we were gonna call the roll if we were gonna just approve the whole thing, flooring and asbestos, because Mr. Monday, Counselor Monday, was not approving this. So now, we're just gonna do the asbestos part. There's no, there's no discrepancy, everybody wanted it.
Well, it was unanimous, I thought.
Right, it was unanimous.
Are there any nay votes?
All in favor? That's what I thought I said, and nobody said no. All in favor for that amendment, just for the asbestos? Okay, let's do the roll call. This is just for the asbestos only. Ms. City Clerk, call this roll.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Counselor Katz.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam. Counselor Mohammed.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Yes.
All right.
Eight yeses.
Eight yeses, so.
Two absent.
Two absent, so it passes for the asbestos gentleman to come in and clean all of that out, and we'll come back later, and we'll talk about the flooring. Now, about how long is it going to take for him to do this, to remove the asbestos? Anyone knows?
About three weeks is what Mr. Luca indicated.
And after we, after we get all of that done, then we'll have to come back and maybe rebid for the floor, is that what you were saying, Mr. Martin?
Well, if, if it's a current contractor doesn't get the bid from the flooring, I'm sure he'd just say, pay me and all of it. I'm not gonna, two contractors ain't gonna work on the same building.
Well, what I'm thinking is that the asbestos man-
He's already done a lot of the work already.
Right, but the asbestos man will be long gone by the time this gentleman come back.
He hasn't been paid for anything that's been done.
The current contractor very well may be the contractor that this council approves. So, nothing will have changed. We'll just get the asbestos out so they can get in and do their job.
All right, we're just trying to get a clear understanding of what we're doing here, so we won't come back and say, well, you said this, or you said that. We don't wanna quip and pro quo. All right, we got that behind us. Next, we're gonna have permission for Mayor McClendon to sign an agreement of understanding between the City of West Memphis and the Arkansas Department of Transportation. We don't need any action, we don't need to, what is it? Okay, I raise five children, I can hear real well. Girl, you better stop talking about me. Okay, permission for Mayor McClendon to sign an agreement of understanding between the City of West Memphis and the Arkansas Department of Transportation. So, what action do we need to take on that? He's, we talked to him in city council by phone, and he's agreeing to everything.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All right, it passes. Okay, call the roll.
Counselor Katz.
Yes.
Counselor Crum. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam. Counselor Mohammed.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
It passes. All right, it, it passes, Mr. Crum.
May I make a statement?
Yes, sir. I mean, we've done the roll call now, but we'll allow it.
Well, the real, the only reason, I wish we would take some more time because these two last permission requests are really both related to each other. And I'm still not really fully understanding of what this project is gonna turn out to be. And I just think that it's gonna cost the city a lot more money than what we anticipated. But that's, that's all I mean.
If I may ask, that city engineer come forward just to clarify. In pre-council, and the reason why I voted for this is the stabilization, stabilization plan is of critical importance. I'm not sold on the trail, but that's just an aspect that may come through this process.
Right, and we discussed it extensively in a public works meeting, and even had representatives to come and talk to us in showstopper.
Right, the, the TAP funding is a transportation alternative plan. And as we know, RDOT puts out transportation funding, and a lot of that goes to roads, to concrete roads, to asphalt roads, things of that nature. And a lot of it's not, barely any of it, any of it's dedicated to any type of drainage. We are limited in the scope of what we can, you know, resource out as far as drainage. Now, we're looking at various different avenues, but it just so happened that this grant came up that we could apply for that would also facilitate a walking trail through the 10-mile bayou. But it also incorporates the slope stabilization process at the exact same time. And it's not that we're not, we're not just gonna go so far and not look for any other funding. This is just a kickstart to, of an actual project that's in our Grow 2040 Plan. And the, the funding was out there. It would go through partly my budget and somewhat through planning and development. It'd be a great starter project to introduce some new employees to work with RDOT on. So him and I, Jim from Planning and Development, and I are both leads on it. You know, the engineering fees, the, the second permission request that comes after this, we've had Pickering do the study on the 10-mile bayou, actually plan out where this trail will be most feasible. They've already done the LiDAR survey, and then that first itemization that says field surveys, what they really need to do is figure out property lines and to see where there might be encroachments from personal property, fence lines, things of that nature, where we'll actually have to go in and fix those areas and have the property put back where it should be. 'Cause a lot of time, nobody has maintained that over the years. So it's, it's a long process.
On the, on the grant, it's an 80/20 split, right? I mean, the city's responsible for 20. And then we're responsible for the engineering fees.
Correct.
And this is our second shot at possibly doing a trail down that bow. The first one didn't pan out very well.
That's correct, and I'm not exactly sure how that was funded. I do not believe it was funded in this nature whatsoever. This has to actually pass RDOT's standards before they, you know, they, they will have somebody out there looking at the project.
Is that $57,000 maximum on the 80/20?
Yes, but, oh, for the 80/20? The $57,000?
It says 230 maximum, so that'd be $57,000 be the matching?
Correct, and then we have to-
Then the job get done for $318,000?
Yes, and then Pickering, we've actually spoke with them. They plan to stay, they are planning to stay within that scope of what we're being awarded and not go outside of that. And if you look at the itemization, some of those things can be eliminated, such as the advertising and bidding, 'cause we have our own contracts here in-house, and we do have done our own advertisement in-house. So there's a lot of itemization things that are in this contract, which is the next permission to sign, that we can eliminate, that we don't have to go on.
Where, where's the trail gonna originate, the start point?
The starting point, actually, right there, from Jim's scope of work, it was the Barton to Avalon, it was the Phase 1. And the reason why we're starting in that direction is 'cause that is the downstream direction. If we start at the upstream direction, what we'll do is actually create some type of dam downstream, And so we'll have water backing up. That's the purpose of starting, you know, the opposite direction.
Is the primary focus of this study for stabilization? Or is it for a trail?
It's for the original was for the slope stabilization. And we have prices on that, and that tops $20 million to do the whole trail.
Right.
Yes.
But to do the entire stabilization?
The entire stabilization without the trail. Now, the trail, only part of the trail that was put in the study that we did originally was a suggestion of where to put it. There wasn't a, "Well, you need to put it exactly right here." It's mainly been on the top of bank and no, like, exact location.
But the trail was the primary reason that the funding, the grant, was given to the city, right? The trail?
Yes, but the trail can't be there without the slope stabilization or...
I understand. And as Councilman Kat said, you know, I could understand the stabilization of the bayou. This is the second time we've tried to put a... This will be the second time that a trail has been put down through there. And it's, as you can see, you just drive by and take a glance over the bridge you're crossing on Bayou, and you may not see a trail that's supposed to be there.
Right.
Okay, I'm done.
I just want to make sure I understand. We go through the process. We can still plan on doing stabilization long-term. We can still apply for everything that's out there.
Right, but we'll re-funding on this.
The trail is just going to be a secondary discussion.
It was part of the Grow 2040 Plan that was accepted by the council. So it was incorporated in the future projection of what, where we saw development.
Of course, to be amended. The stabilization cannot be. It has to be done.
Yes, it has to be done.
Yes, okay. As long as we're on that same path.
Correct.
All right, thank you so very much. I was trying to listen to two things that are going on, but we got all of that clear. That's what I was thinking. That's why we were trying to get that totally clear. So this, the permission for Mayor McClain to sign the agreement passes. Now, we're going to have the next permission for Mayor McClain to sign the agreement for scope of work and fee proposal for providing planning and professional engineering services for... Are you supposed to be reading?
No, ma'am. It's just a permission request.
Permission for Mayor McClain to sign agreement for scope of work and fee proposal for providing planning and professional engineering services for the development of the 10-mile bayou trail Phase One to West Memphis to Pickering. May I have a motion?
Again, I'm not in favor of the trail. Stabilization, yes. The arts at RDOT, but I'm not in favor of the trail.
I guess we'll have to have a roll. Are there any other discussions before we...
We got a motion to approve it first.
Right, a motion to approve it? Can I have a motion to approve it? Nobody said anything. I guess it dies for lack of approval. Nobody said anything, so it dies. For lack of approval. Okay, we'll discuss it later. When it dies, how do we bring it back to life?
We'll have to put back on the agenda.
Okay, we'll put it back on the agenda to bring it back to life. Committee reports. Fire Matt?
Yes, ma'am. Met on November 12th. We had two resignations, which were primarily two new recruits who went to the academy and struggled a little bit. So they resigned so they could come back in, continue their studies, and then hopefully reapply. And that was the best way to handle them. At the time of the meeting, we had six firefighter positions available. We have gone through the process and looking to hire five leaves us one open. We have three paramedics that were available on that date. We have, in the process of filling one, which still leaves us two open. There were no retirements in the last period. The turnouts, we are ordering so many per year over a four-year period of time in order to ease the budget somewhat. So the first year has been ordered. And then over the next four years, we'll order 12 each year. Turnouts are good for approximately 10 years. The face, the mast, they're refitted every year regardless. But turnouts are good for 10 years. Vehicle maintenance. E4, Engine 4, needs to replace Engine 7. Engine 7 is a 1961, if I remember correctly, piece of equipment. It's just time for it to go ahead and put it out and replace it. In order to do that, we need to look at replacing E4 on the front line with a new pumper. Right now, we're looking at some options. Ballpark's coming around $600,000. But we still got a little bit more studying to do with that. The... One of the staff vehicles, Unit 118, has... It's 11 years old. It's had some struggles in its days. It's time to replace it. So the commission did approve the purchase of that for $38,324.63. It will not, of course, be paid for until 2020. It'll have to be ordered to be a particular color. So it's on the state procurement contract, so they don't roll up as often. But when one becomes available, the council or the commission is asking the council for approval to go ahead and get that ordered.
Are you asking us today?
Yes, I'm making a motion that the council will go ahead and approve the purchase of this vehicle when it becomes available on these state contracts.
How much is that?
$38,324.63. They currently have those funds available in their capital outlay plan for 2019. And whether we hold in reserves or we actually roll this into the depreciation account for 2020, we'll look at how that, you know, which way it would be funded.
Now, tell us again, what kind of vehicle this is?
This is a Chevrolet Tahoe, staff vehicle.
And who will be driving that?
I cannot answer that question.
Okay.
It may be one inspector's. If I had to guess, it probably is an inspector.
Okay, Alderman Kat has made that motion to purchase this vehicle for $38,000. Can I have a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Ms. Harris seconded. Any other discussion?
Tell me, why does it have to be a Tahoe?
It's on state bid. It's very close to the same thing that the police department's been ordering. I'm going to say they believe it's the quality of the vehicle will give it more life than the Trailblazers did. Again, that's something council needs to look at going forward. What do we want to order? Do we want to try to steer it in a different direction? But they've been going with Tahos.
I guess it depends on the purpose.
The next item is a Dodge and then pickup trucks. There's not many items, select items on there. And we've always stayed with the Tahoe because that's what we have, and so we have. If we have to do some minor work on it, we can do it in West Memphis. But I have two different types of vehicles.
Well, that's kind of like what I just said. If it... I guess I would have to know the purpose of the vehicle before I would make a decision on it, I guess, being a Tahoe.
Well, from the... Again, from our mechanics, they're much more familiar with Tahos. We've had several on the fleet now. It's something that's rather routine for them. If we switch brands, you know, do we have to deal with additional training, things of that nature, parts from different manufacturers? So...
Yeah, but...
Does our maintenance motor pool over on... Was it Van Buren? Does it do all the utility vehicles too?
No, we have two different, you know...
Actually, we're sharing stuff right now. The utility's doing, taking care of the bar department.
Yes.
So on the big vehicles. And the shop is taking care of the minor repairs on Tahos.
So what do you estimate the price of this Tahoe?
$38,324.63 under state contract.
That includes the head...
That includes the equipment, yes.
Yeah, $33,000 is the state bid.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussions. I guess we may need to call a roll on this one. Ms. City Clerk?
Counselor McCat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum? Counselor Harris? Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson? Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam? Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
The motion passes, so you can tell them to proceed forward.
All right, Mayor, if I may finish. Under training, we have three personnel with the academy at this time. We'll be sending, as we employ these new five, they will be going after the first of the year. Background checks have been completed on the six individuals we're talking to now. Now they're doing their physicals, drug tests, things of that nature. As of September 30th, the department is at 69.21% of their projected budget. So they're at 75%. They're a little better than...
That's a pretty good percentage.
And that completes your report.
Thank you so very, very much. Chamber?
Chamber meeting for November 13th, 2019. Called order was by President Wayne Crum, Councilperson Wayne Crum. I'd like to remind the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce diplomats that the Christmas potluck will be November 26th at 5:00 p.m. And the reason why I'm reading this is that on the same day of November 26th, the Christmas tree lighting at Worthington Park will be at 6:00 p.m. that evening. It'd be... That's on a... We'd like to invite everyone to come out for the tree lighting. There will be live reindeer, cookies, hot chocolate, Christmas carols by local students, and a visit from Santa. I want to remind everyone also that the Christmas parade is scheduled to be December 3rd, starting at 7:00 p.m.
Does that conclude your...
Can I add just one thing to his list? That is that the Chamber banquet this year is going to be February 20th. And our guest speaker is going to be Ray Brown, who went to school at Marion and played 28 years in the professional football league.